Standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening as umbrily as we know how, thanking you for all the blessings you bestow upon us as a city. We ask you to put your love and kindness on all the communities who've been faced with natural catastrophes and other events of drastic nature. We ask you to give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours when a nation under God indivisible, liberated and peaceful. Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smiegel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Wynn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Protegiero and Ms. Williams from tonight's meeting, please.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
The clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting.
Resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Action Act. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. Thank you for being here. The process which we use for tonight's meetings, the first thing we're going to do is take up something called an invitation to bid. It's a relatively short process. I'm sure the council will be able to deal with that in a very quick manner. We'll then move to the public hearings. There are three public hearings on tonight's docket. At the conclusion of the public hearings, we'll move to the consent agenda. There are a number of items on the consent agenda. The council is allowed to vote on all of these matters in one vote. If it chooses, our main vote on them separately. But we'll wait until the consent agenda is called to determine that. At the conclusion of the consent agenda, we'll move directly to the regular agenda. We have a number of items on tonight's docket there. We actually have two or three personnel items to walk on to add to the docket tonight. At the conclusion of the formal agenda, the regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the City Council on a non-agenda item, we're glad to hear from you. All you have to do before the meeting, have your name called before the meeting began, is to have signed a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. And some of you elected to do that. So the first item tonight is the invitation to bid. Mr. Clerk?
First item is a receipt of bids pursuant to invitation to bid and notice of public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to action of the council on June 25, 2013. Under state law, public notice has been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to accept bids for a long-term lease agreement with an initial term of 25 years for a parcel of land located at 1136 Vista Street in Barad Park.
Okay. How many bids have been received?
One bid has been received.
Okay. Please read the bid and mark it for identification.
Richmond 20 MHZ LLC has submitted a bid in which they offered to lease the parcel at 1136 Vista Street for a term of 25 years at the annual rent of $24,000 for the first year and annual increases thereafter of 3% in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the land agreement attached to the proposed ordinance. Have marked it for identification as WBG Bid 072313.
Thank you. Are there any additional bids offered tonight? Okay, if there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding closed. Is there any member of the public who would like to be heard on this matter now that the bidding is closed? Okay, if there's no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from city staff regarding the bid received from Richmond 20 MHZ LLC?
City staff recommends that the bid by Richmond 20 MHZ LLC be accepted in the lease agreement awarded to Richmond 20 MHZ LLC.
Right. Will you please read the proposed ordinance?
An ordinance approving the lease of certain property owned by the City of Norfolk located at 1136 Vista Street for a period of up to 25 years upon certain conditions and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a lease agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to the public hearings. Public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing number one scheduled this day pursuant to action of the council on June 25, 2013. Under state law, public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend Chapters 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 25, and 27 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk, 1992, in order to recognize, reorganize the use tables in each chapter, normalize terminology for the uses, make typographical corrections, and improve conformity with the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act.
All right, there are no members of the public who have signed up to address the council on this matter, so the clerk can please call the roll, please. Hope there are no questions. Okay.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain portions of Chapters 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 25, and 27 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk, 1992, in order to reorganize the use tables in each chapter, normalize terminology for the uses, make typographical corrections, and improve conformity with the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, 42 U.S.C., State 200 CC. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled this day pursuant to action of the council on July 9, 2013. Under state law, notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of certain Jim lots.
All right, there are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter. If there are no questions, then the clerk can call the roll.
Ordinance is authorized in conveyance of certain parcels of property acquired by the City of Norfolk pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreements to the following persons: Ricky and Debbie Stevens Flood, West Side of Lenz Avenue, and Robert Baker, 810 C Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protegi-- Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Okay, is that the public hearings? That concludes them? The consent agenda, there are a number of items here. Would any member of the city council like to have any one of these matters considered separately? Okay, call the roll.
Consent agenda, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the sale of alcohol beverages for off-premises consumption on property located at 738 West 22nd Street, Suite 10. And by a vote 6-0, Planning Commission recommends this be approved.
Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an entertainment establishment on property located at 5957 East Virginia Beach Boulevard. And by a 6-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends this exception be approved.
Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, thank you. R3, please.
Yes, the attorney for the applicant has requested this matter be continued till August 27.
Okay. Mr. Romine, August 27, all right with you? Okay. All right, don't you need to call it?
Yes.
Read it and then we'll call the roll?
Yes, I will. An ordinance granting a special exception to permit retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 6667 East Virginia Beach Boulevard.
And the motion is to continue till August 27.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
And the motion also includes R3A.
R3A.
Now, we're at R4, please.
An ordinance accepting a grant award for $700 from the Target 2013 Public Safety Grant Program in appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds to support the Norfolk Police Department's citywide national night out on August 6, 2013.
Just a second. Mr. Cook, Joe Cook, please.
Mayor Frame, members of the council, city manager. My name is Joe Cook, taxpayer and resident living at 1147 Surrey Crescent. I come today asking you to redirect these grant funds in R4 to address my grave and extremely upsetting concerns about a botched rape investigation by the Norfolk Police Department and the alleged disrespectful treatment of the victim at the hands of the investigating officers reported in the pilot on July 7, 2013. My heart goes out to the victim, who was assaulted by a sexual predator, then had her credibility assaulted by those who swore to protect and serve her and all of the people. Please address some troubling questions that beg for answers from you and Chief Goldsmith. One, what kind of lapse in training and supervisory oversight allowed this tragedy to happen? And how many other women have suffered the same fate? Two, what prompted a female officer to say on the scene, quote, "If we find out that you're lying, this will be a felony charge," and allegedly repeated it at the station? Three, why was she left in the interview room for 45 minutes alone and then receive abrasive and disrespectful treatment when two detectives finally showed up? Four, why were the department's normal procedures to complete a rape kit not followed? Five, why was the composite given by the victim, later described as almost identical to the actual predator's photo, never released to the public, which possibly could have prevented through more sexual assaults too much later? Six, why did it take a year for the matter to come to the attention of Chief Goldsmith, who belatedly offered an apology to the victim but said that the, quote, "Investigation may not have been properly conducted," end of quote, and finally ordered an internal investigation by OPS? Why does Chief Goldsmith withhold information from the victim and the public as to what happened to the officers who handled the investigation? And those officers worked for the taxpayers of this city, although a reliable source advises that all of them may still be employed at the department? What kind of retraining policies and procedures have been in place to ensure that no woman ever has to endure the pain and suffering inflicted on the victim in this case? In closing, I present you with a petition signed by 75 people, most of them residents of Norfolk, who ask you to promptly address these questions and open the files to the victim and the public, who expects transparency from their government, including the police, who swear to protect and to serve. I have a copy that I'd like each of you to have a copy of and put one in the record, please. One for, there are two sets.
All right, Mr. Cook, thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes the list of speakers. You want to call the roll, please?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5.
R5 is an ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance number 44027, accepting $341,494 grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice, FY10, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds for various projects for the program, and of the accrued interest estimated $5,300 for the purchase of equipment for law enforcement's activities for the program.
Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The R6?
R6 is an ordinance accepting $40,903.20 from the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal Service Fund E-Rate Grant Program in appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $40,903.20 for telecommunications and technology services for the Norfolk Public Library. Dispense with the charter requirements for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7.
R7 is an ordinance approving a right of entry for the benefit of the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8?
R8 is an ordinance approving the acceptance of payment of funds in lieu of tree and shrub replacement or mitigation in the sum of $29,841 from Dominion Virginia Power and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds by the Bureau of Parks and Forestry.
Just a second. Ellis James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place. I am happy to see that there will be some mitigation. But I would like to suggest to the council that somehow we need to do a better job of the process. There are a number of our taxpayers and residents who have been very upset about the procedure and the taking down of the trees and the inconvenience that was rendered along not only Johnston's Road, but all around Lyrimo School and all the way over to Shore Drive. Although I'm glad to see Virginia Power is donating some money to the city, especially to Parks and Recreation. I would hope that in the future, we would not have to wait until we begin to get lots of phone calls. And I know I was in a number of meetings that some of which didn't really have much to do about the issue. And the issue of the damage to the trees and the taking down of the trees came up. It just seems to me that we do have the capacity, Mr. City Manager, for being able to alert the public to what is about to happen and also try to see if we can minimize the psychological impact of such a large project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment on that. Most of the complaints that came in about the tree removal came from people who were not impacted by their personal property being removed. But most of the property owners knew what was going on because there was an outreach effort to those property owners. And we did address them as they came in. And Public Works did work with Dominion on making sure that that was-- but it was a little bit too late. My question is that they're refunding this. All of those trees were in Ward 5. They-- and I understand that they're replenishing stock into-- and it will be a little bit in Ward 3. I'm wondering how many of those trees are going to end up back in that area? Not just replenishing our stock, but they're actually going to go into the areas that were impacted and cleaning that up instead of taking them and then putting them in other parts of the city. I want to do that, but people have asked about the amount of trees. I think it was close to 800 trees, maybe, that were taken down in that area. I know they were placing trees on personal property if the property owner allows them to do that. But these, this is generally our trees that we had in our stock.
Well, I'm certain the manager will make sure that the damage that was-- that occurred will be repaired with these funds. I don't know. There's no intention to do anything but use that money, as far as I'm aware, right where the damage occurred. I mean--
To the extent possible, yes.
Yeah. I just-- I mean, there may be some trees that don't need to be replaced. And maybe they're actually, we may need more in other places. So, but I, I mean, I understand the point. I mean--
Yeah, there was a lot of healthy trees that were taken from that area. I mean, if you look at it, just, if you go over in that area now, it's just, this is open area. And it's disappointing the way that it looks. I understand it's Dominion's property, but we just lost quite a bit over there.
We had a presentation on this in Larchmont because the citizens were very concerned about the way the trees, frankly, had been trimmed. And there was a very well-schooled forester that worked for Dominion that spoke about, you know, one of our problems is we're planting the wrong trees. And Barclay can probably speak to this, but, you know, that there's trees that are better served to be under power lines so that they're not always interfering and needing to be as severely cut back or destroyed. So I would hope that this money also goes, not just to replace what was torn down, but to replace them with trees that are appropriate for this elevation.
They have a very strict code now about what they allow on any of their utilities. These are ones that have been there pre their code, the last 15 or 20 years.
But if the city's putting them in, I just want to make sure that we know about that.
I can assure you, they are, and the city is, on their own, has gone to a less invasive species of trees on the street.
And shorter ones.
These are ones that have been there for years and years and years and pre any-- and of course, one of them falls over and knocks out electricity to 6,000 people, then we, you know.
Yeah.
So they had to do what they had to do.
Well, maybe our tree commission can take a look at that area and how many trees were taken and make recommendations for where they should be replaced.
I'm glad, we're glad, I mean, we'll get them to do that.
But it sounds like, yeah, we're already on top of that.
Yeah.
And it should all go to Ward 5.
No. But you, have you been over there to go see how--
He was kidding.
No, but I'm serious. Have you been over there to see what's done?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know.
It's horrible.
Yeah.
And it's uncovered some unsightly things over there, too, that have raised other problems with code issues.
Yeah.
I think it's, it was a serious, and I understand it's Dominion's property, but the way that they came through initially, it was a disappointment. The city did get on them about their customer service. They did address that, but it is horrible, the way that it looks now.
Well, even those that are not removed are horrible looking.
They haven't even--
It's so truncated. I mean--
I don't--
We had them all over Larchmont. They're just--
Wait till they hit military highway.
Yeah.
They haven't even gotten to that side yet over in Oakwood area.
One of the, and we need to move on, but one of the problems is that we have-- I don't know if I saw if Kifer was in here, but the relationship with Dominion Power, they used to have people here you could talk to that would meet with us constantly. And they, you know, in cost-saving measures, there's, they don't have point people like they used to when these projects, they used to be in City Hall all the time. And now you can hardly, you can identify the one person down here, Junius, who represents Dominion, but he basically is sort of a goodwill guy for them. He's not an engineer, an operations guy. They used to have people that we talked to almost weekly about projects. I don't know, maybe four years ago, some of us went to Richmond to meet with the guy who actually delivered the power. You know, Dominion is broken up into a generations unit and a delivery unit. And we met with a guy who delivered it and said, "Our biggest problem is, is, you know, we don't have anybody to sit with and talk to about when we have issues." And so--
Yeah.
And so we need to, you know, we continually need to build that relationship with Dominion. So we have somebody we can pick up the phone and say, "Stop." You know, "We need to talk to you about this now," and who has that ability once they've, to stop a work order, once it's gone out. So. But, I mean, it's a problem not just with the trees, but it's a problem everywhere. And we just need to-- John, were you in that meeting that we went up to Dominion? We met with Mr. Johnson up there, several of them, just to say, "Give us somebody. Give us the name of somebody." So. Anyway, but it's, this is just another example of that. So. Anyway.
Pathology, you know?
Yeah. Max, I know, but in Max, it's not the same. He's got the whole region. You know, we used to have an engineer who was, who would meet with us. R9, then.
We have to vote on R8.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R9?
R9 is an ordinance approving a license agreement with Hoy Construction, Inc. for the use of a portion of the City of Norfolk property located at 1630 Armstead Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R10?
R10 is a resolution approving and adopting the policies and procedures for the disposition of certain parcels of city-owned property, commonly referred to as Jim parcels. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? I'm sorry. Mr. Wynn? Mr. Frame?
She said aye, too.
She said, uh--
She called.
R11?
R11 is a resolution adopting financial policies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mr. Jones. My name is Dan Montague. I live at 4605 Creek Street here in the City of Norfolk. I drove yesterday out to Princess Anne to get the Virginia Beach Senior Citizens and Disabled Tax Relief Program. Anyway, theirs makes ours look terrible. I mean, absolutely terrible. For one thing, you can have an income of $63,450 for tax exemption. In the City of Norfolk, you've got $28,611. They don't, and anyway, you can have a tax income of $67,000 for a freeze. We don't have that. But the thing about it is, though, now, they have got more people in Virginia Beach on tax relief than we do in Norfolk because they've got a greater population. tax relief than we do in Norfolk because they've got a greater population, and the thing about it is, they don't have all this Mickey Mouse stuff that we do. They did theirs in six paragraph. Ours was over fourteen, because I didn't even copy the back page of this. And the thing about it is, if they can do it and do it right, why can't we do it? This is what I want to know. They, I've had senior after senior after senior ask me, "How come they took away my tax relief?" And I keep telling them, "Well, they got a budget deficit." But the thing about it is, when Councilman Burford can find two-million-three-hundred-thousand dollars to buy a piece of property to take it off the tax rolls that we do not need for that library, because there's plenty on the west side of Ballantyne Boulevard, and then we have all these little slush funds in the city, so we can do this, and we can do that, and then a contingency fund here and a contingency fund there that nobody knows about. The average taxpayer doesn't know a thing about this. And the thing about it is, seniors are not happy with this, and I am just one of the few that are not happy with this. And the thing about it is, we deserve a break. We are old people. We have put in a lifetime of hard work. I know I have, and the thing is, you, it's just like putting a carrot before a donkey, you wiggle it in front of him, and then when he takes a step, you pull it away from him and I'll push it out a little bit further. And anyway, we've got to quit this routine in this city. If Virginia Beach can do it and do it right, how come we can't? Because we are supposed to be the leader of the region, are we not? Thank you.
Okay. Back to financial policies. I would urge anybody to look at the Virginia Beach program and the Norfolk program and see how similar they are, by the way. Um, I mean, the deferral, everything, the sliding scales, despite the fact that they're not nearly as stressed, they aren't stressed, I mean, and we are, so.
Adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Wait, 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 wait. Uh, I'm sorry. Jane Bethel, sorry.
Mayor Frame, you piqued my interest in the beginning where you said there were some personnel things that you're going to vote on. Could I wait and speak at that point?
Oh, the personnel issues have to do with appointing citizens to boards and commissions, and an appointment of a city attorney, and there was a third one having to do with the selection of, we're going to have a meeting on August the twentieth. We weren't scheduled to have one, but those...
Are you not going to be voting on that tonight?
On the, yeah, I am, but I mean, I'm glad, if you want to wait till then, I'm glad to, okay. You can call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R twelve?
R twelve is an ordinance appropriating three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars from the U.S. Marshal Service Special Revenue Account, if and when received, and authorizing the expenditure thereof at the direction of the sheriff to pay for various employee benefits, equipment purchases, and maintenance costs related to programs designed to improve the efficiency of the jail.
Just a second. Ellis James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at twenty-twenty-one Kenlake Place. I just wanted, for the record, to indicate support for this. Anything that would give us the opportunity to assist the employees from the standpoint of benefits is certainly worthy of note and support. The equipment purchases, of course, are extremely important if it is applicable to the people who are incarcerated and helping them to be able to progress to a point where, when they're released, they can go effectively back to work on a trade, and of course, any time we can improve the efficiency at the jail, that enhances the safety. So I'm very much in support of this. There are several other items to come. In a few minutes, I won't speak on each one, but I think that you understand my point, so.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you again, Mr. James. Um, okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R thirteen?
R thirteen is an ordinance appropriating thirty-five-thousand dollars and authorizing the expenditure thereof by the sheriff, if and when received, from the Deputy Fund Special Service Revenue Account, to pay for the holding functions for his employees, extending condolences and congratulations to his employees, and similar incentive-related benefits for his employees. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I threw me off there.
Keep you on your toes. An ordinance approving and accepting of receipts for special revenue project for the sheriff's Community Corrections Program, appropriating six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-and-forty-nine dollars for fiscal year 2014, authorizing the expenditure thereof by the sheriff, authorizing the sheriff's continued employment of twelve persons for the program, and providing funds for their salaries and benefits. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R fifteen?
R fifteen is an ordinance appropriating one-hundred-seventy-two-thousand dollars and seventy-two-and-five dollars, if and when received, from the sheriff, and authorizing the expenditure thereof towards salaries and benefits for three sheriff employees. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R fifteen?
R fifteen is an ordinance appropriating one-hundred-seventy-two-thousand dollars and seventy-two-and-five dollars, if and when received, from the sheriff, and authorizing the expenditure thereof towards salaries and benefits for three sheriff employees. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R sixteen?
R sixteen is an ordinance approving the acceptance of a grant award in the sum of three-hundred dollars from the Firefighters Charitable Foundation, appropriating and authorizing expenditure of the grant funds for the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention and Education Program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R sixteen?
R sixteen is an ordinance approving the acceptance of a grant award in the sum of three-hundred dollars from the Firefighters Charitable Foundation, appropriating and authorizing expenditure of the grant funds for the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention and Education Program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R eighteen?
R eighteen is an ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Tides Baseball Club LP of three-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-five dollars and thirty cents plus interest, based upon the overpayment of concessions, business license tax for 2013. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R nineteen?
R nineteen. R nineteen is an ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Alcon Laboratories, Inc., of thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-three dollars and forty-three cents plus interest, based upon the correction of business personal property tax assessments for tax years 2012 and 2013. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Wait, wait, wait. Um, okay, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
You have an add-on, please?
I have three additional add-ons, sir. First is an ordinance to schedule a city council meeting on Tuesday, August twentieth, 2013, at 2:00 P.M. Dispense with the charter requirements for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Second one is a resolution appointing or reappointing sixty-six persons to eleven boards, seven commissions, two committees, and one authority for certain terms.
It's like Jane, Jane Bethel?
Yeah, real quickly, too, why is Jane's coming up? We had a discussion about expanding the bike commission by two, and I know Dr. Wibley had some issues with it, but I thought we were going to change language with that, and we had the person apply for it, as well as the other lady that was up there.
I think we determined not to expand it. Actually, I mean, Breck had his notes, and I haven't looked at this, but I...
I left that meeting and asked the gentleman to get his application in so that they could get it on the docket. I know Dr. Wibley said she thought it was fine how it was, but I thought you said it was okay to move it to two more people, to get those two people on there.
I mean, I'm all for putting good, for putting good people on the board. We can talk about it next week and, or when we come back, but the notes that Breck had, he prepared the ordinance, the notes, and I went over the ordinance with him, said